so um if this is your first time um we come together every week we are reading the book Egypta magic and um this is the same book uh as I've said previously and in the past if you want to um suggest a book that we read in the future uh please feel free to send me a DM or an email uh on my website and yeah so um previously we've we've read a whole bunch of different sections uh thus far we have read oh I'm trying to find the page hello so we read about magical stones we've met read about the practices in ancient Kemet um I believe we are now on uh figures so yep and probably tonight will be moving into pictures formula spells etcetera so um we're going to pick up on page ninety-three oh and I'm like I did not stop in a place that was like a nice clean paragraph but that's okay so um pardon me alright so it would it starts off with but it fell out on a day that certain scouts came and I love the fact that when it gets warm out and everybody wants to be outside and be loud my god alright Anka maadi kerti so um let's try that again without interruption this time that would be nice so it fell out on a day that certain scouts came and informed Nekbos that a multitude of the nations of the east had made a league together against Kemet and their allied forces were at the moment marching against him when the Nasud heard the news he laughed and having said some scornful words about his enemies because you know when your enemies come about it's not like you're like oh my gosh I'm so excited like I just can't wait for my enemies to come about like most human beings don't really have that much nice stuff to say so um I'm you know I I it always tickles me whenever they say the king did this and it's just like you know something that's not kingly or queenly per se um and I I just I think it's pretty funny so um he went into his private chamber and pouring water into the bowl began to work mad I'm sorry to work magic in the usual way but when he had spoken the words of Hekau he looked at the wax figures and saw to his dismay the net the Netaru of Kemet were steering the enemy ships and leading their soldiers to war against himself so you know it's kinda like when magic or manifestation gone wrong now as soon as Nekbo saw this he understood that at the end of the uh king the end of the kingdom was at hand for Heathrow the Netaru um had been want to hold converse with him readily and to lend him their help whenever he had need of it he then quitted the chamber hastily and sh- oh having shaved off his hair and his beard and disguised himself by putting in putting on common apparel he took a ship and fled to I'm gonna say Pella in Macedonia where he established himself as a physician and as a comedic soothsayer I'm like I'm pretty sure we could have gotten a whole nother um word for that one but either way omitting for the present any reference to the contents of the fourth chapter of the hmm okay now he back to talking about Greek stuff I remember that now the pseudo calcinians in which the casting of the nativity of Olympius by Nekbos had been described we come into the passage where the story of the way in which he sent a dream to the queen by means of a wax figure is told oh that's interesting I'm like let me read some more before I even say anything about that so his object was to persuade the queen that the oh this is gonna be interesting the comedic Netaru Amen no the comedic Netaru Amen sorry would come to her at night to do this he left her presence and going out into the desert he collected a number of herbs which he knew how to employ in causing people to dream dreams and having brought them back with him he squeezed the juice out of them that has to be a lot of strength I'm just saying have you ever tried to like I'm going to squeeze parsley like that ain't that easy like I so he must have been real real strong to make that happen and he having poured the juice of the her herbs over the wax figure of the queen he uh adjured the demons to the purpose that the Olympians dreamed in dream in which the Netaru Amen came to her and embraced her and told her she should give birth to a man child who would who should avenge her on her husband Philip but the means described above were not the only ones known to Nekbos for procuring dreams to I'm sorry for when he wanted to make Philip of Macedon to hmm I'm so sorry so the first thing I literally just thought was was Power Rangers I'm so sorry for that like I just had the the whole Macedon and I'm know that's not the same thing but I just had the whole the like image and it was hilarious to me so so sorry about that alright so um let me go back uh okay so to see certain things in a dream so pretty much he's using herbs and wax figures to like he saw oh things aren't going my way so he you know I I suppose in a way that would be like Oracle although the way the story is sounding thus far I'm like aren't you trying to manipulate what Oracle just told you was gonna happen but again that's a very human thing I could see a human being doing something like that let's continue uh so he wanted to make him dream things in a dream and take a certain view about what he saw uh so he sent a hawk which he had previously bewitched by magical words to Philip as he lay asleep and in a single night the hawk flew from Macedonia to the place where Philip was and coming to and coming to him told him what things he should see in his dream and he saw them on the morrow for Philip had the dream explained by an expounder of dreams so he got him like a dream dictionary no I'm being funny and he was satisfied that the child to whom his wife uh Olympius was about to give birth was the son of the Netaru Amen of Libya interesting who was regarded as the father of all the Nasud or the kings who ascended the throne of Kemet who did not belong to the royal stock of that country oh so you know I wanna see where this is going so you it's like he made a setup oh that's actually kinda smart like oh y'all are going to um take over my kingdom now I'm gonna send dreams to the queen dreams to the king and I'm gonna put them against each other smart not very nice I'm pretty sure that's aesthetic but let's continue um here in connection with the um the way the Kometi use wax figures must be mentioned one of the two stories and traditions of Alexander the Great which are clearly derived from um comedic sources the Arab writer Abu Shaker who flourished in the ten eleven twelve thirteenth century of our era mentions a tradition that Aristotle gave to Alexander a number of wax figures nailed down in a box which was fastened by a chain and which he ordered him never to let out of his land or at least out of the one of his servants so pretty much keep this amongst you don't let this get out there kind of a thing so okay the box was to go wherever Alexander went and Aristotle taught him to recite certain formula over it whenever he took it up or put it down the figures in the box were intended to represent the various kinds of armed forces that Alexander was likely to find opposed to him some of the models held in their hands laden sores which were curved backwards and some had spears in their hands pointed um their head downwards and some had bows with cut strings okay so essentially it's kinda like you bout to go into battle so I imagine it's some sort of like um what's the word I'm looking for it is um kinda like a protection thing so you know you're going into battle here's what you know we wanna make sure you are constantly kind of throwing bad stuff at the enemy so that you can overcome so that makes sense I'm like now I'm about to read okay viewed by what we know of the ideals which underlay the use of wax figures by the Kometi and the Greeks ah why do these people they literally set off a car alarm with that oh my gosh okay you really really gotta love your neighbors anyway so um the underlying use of wax figures by the Kometi and the Greeks it is clear in providing Alexander with these uh models and the words and the Hekau to use them Aristotle believed he was giving him the means of making his enemies to become like the figures in the box and so they would be powerless to attack him so he cites the book it says life and exploits of Alexander the Great one volume edition page ten sixteen I almost did that backwards alright so in the Greco-Roman period I really no lie I feel like I'm gonna just oh hmm I'll I'll read it cuz I guess it kinda it has context in the Greco-Roman period so he then says the Greeks use incantations at an early date as we may see from Pender uh Pathia uh number four I guess that's like verse two hundred and thirteen the writer lived in the first half of the fifth century BCE um so okay uh I I no lie I do like the whole you know footnotes and so on and so forth but anyhow so um in the Greco-Roman period uh wax figures were used in the performance of magical ceremonies of every kind and the two following examples indicate that the idea which underlay their use had not changed in the least if a lover wished to secure the favors of his mistress he is directed to make a figure of a dog in wax mixed with pitch gum etcetera eight fingers long and certain uh Hekau are to be written over the place where the ribs should be next it was necessary to write on a tablet other other Hekau or names of beings who were supposed to possess magical powers on this tablet the figure of the dog must be placed and the tablet made to rest upon a tripod when this had been done the lover must recite the Hekau uh which were written on the dog's side and also the names bit which were inscribed on the tablet and one of the two things would happen i.e. the dog will either snarl and snap or he will bark if he snarls and snaps the lover will not gain the object of his affection but if he barks the lady will come to him that is so interesting that is so interesting oh oh Greeks and Romans anyway in the second example the order I'm sorry the lover is ordered to make two wax figures one in the form of Aries and the other in the form of woman the feet of a woman sorry the female figure is to be in the posture of kneeling upon her knees with her hands tied behind her and the male figure is to stand over her with the sword at the throat on the limbs of the female figure a large number of the names of demons are to be written and when this has been done the lover must take thirteen bronze needles and stick them in her limbs saying as he does so I pierce and then the different demons and limbs uh that she may think of me wowzers and I think it's so funny side note if we were to look at um contemporary like movies and things like that and people be like oh my gosh it's a like voodoo is so evil and then they show voodoo dolls but yet the Greeks and the Romans were doing the same thing just saying so that um the lover might next write certain words of power on the laden plate which must be tied to the wax figure with a string containing three hundred and sixty-five knots three hundred and so I guess one for every day clearly and both figure and plate are to be buried in a grave of someone who died young or who has been slain by violence yikes uh he must then recite a long incantation uh to the infernal gods of all these things to be done in proper manner the lover will obtain the woman's affections wow from uh Kemet by way of Greece and Rome the use of wax figures passed into Western Europe and England and then he goes on and he talks about the Middle Ages and stuff that they used to do back then which I am skipping OMG um the following extracts from Thomas Middleton's The Witch excuse me which is London printed in seventeen seventy-eight and then he goes on and he's quoting it looks like it's a play cuz it keeps saying act one scene two so okay nope 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 he's still all up in the Europeans skibbity skibbity skip yeah oh now he quoting the Bible oh the art of making such figures King James not really the Bible but you know the dude who made the Bible so okay so we're gonna skip that keep it pushing thus okay huh now we can now we can pick up now now it's something that's relevant to us so thus we have seen that the belief of the efficacy of wax figures is at least six thousand years old and judging from passages in the works of modern writers from seventeen something mind you he he was from the early nineteen hundreds so I guess for him that's kind of modern seventeen seventy to eight was it eighteen eighty or ninety I'm gonna make sure this particular book nineteen oh one so I guess seventeen hundreds is recent perhaps you know I guess it's a matter of uh of opinion but anyway um its existence is unknown in our country at the present time so he was from UK so he's talking about UK uh this chapter may be fittingly ended by a notice of the benefits oh accrued by a Christian merchant skip Virgin Mary skip when the merchant arrived blabbity blah Virgin Mary yada 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 the merchant's eye was healed and that's how they end that so I'm just saying if it don't apply we just gonna keep it pushing so alright now we're finally on chapter four magical pictures formula and spell don't laugh I I dropped water on my book so from what has been said above it is clear that the Kometi believed it possible to vivify the means of formula and word or Hekau any figure made in the form of a man or animal and to make it work either on behalf or against his fellow man besides this he believes greatly in the efficacy of representations or pictures of the Netaru and of the divine beings and things provided that were that Hekau properly recited uh by properly appointed people were recited over them hmm now that is already making me think of a lot of different things so as far as being Kometi in the twenty-first century what I guess my thought is I I guess this kinda does give a push as to why people have all these different arguments about uh Meru Nacher or Sash Meru Nacher and like how to pronounce things and so on and so forth um because and and I have and I hate to make comparisons like really and truly I do um with other systems but um long time ago when I was looking into Islam I know that you know you had to learn how to speak Arabic and you it was very much about how you pronounce it tones etcetera and um you know with understanding um I know that to be true when it comes to like Chinese Japanese Korean like the very slightest change in how you pronounce something you can get a whole different word and actually even get yourself in trouble so um that makes sense to me like since we can still see that now the idea of like the inflection the tones and so on and so forth that makes sense now the part that sticks out to me is the part where it says um that it had it was said by properly recited by properly appointed people so I suppose and feel free if y'all have a comment or a thought what like how do we figure out who's properly appointed in the twenty-first century or twenty twenty-one cuz this is twenty twenty-one like what does one have to go through what qualifies a person um to be able to do these kinds of things and what kind of training now clearly I'm asking a question that kinda doesn't have an answer because I'm asking question about something that and I'm gonna manifest this something that has is yet to exist so um you know when it comes to the comedic legacy at this point in the twenty-first century there is no for lack of better way of saying it codification there is no one uh way of doing it there like you know when you have uh other religions they you can go to if you're a Christian you can go to seminary you can be trained you can you know have certain teachings and studies that you know all ministers like if you are a Lutheran all Lutheran ministers you know have this body of knowledge but when it comes to being comedic not everybody's really on the same page outside of we all believe in the forty-two we all you know um study the history of Kemet we all you know it's certain things we do but outside of those like that handful of things hmm you can talk to priests you can talk to scholars you could like everybody unless you're an Egyptologist everybody's reading different bodies of works at different times and so on and so forth so when you know I I suppose looking forward and into the future what qualifications do we as a community what are we looking for um for the people to be able to properly speak these words at at the properly appointed time like these properly appointed people so it all goes hand in hand so um do I have the answer heck no I don't have the answer this would you know this would be a conversation um amongst a you know myriad of different groups of people and you know with like a consensus would need to be had so uh but I do think it's very interesting the way they put it they are like no it's properly like everyday person isn't doing this but you know it's different now so should it be the like maybe all temples need to teach a certain something and this way all practitioners when they're home can do you know say and recite and do proper you know do things properly because again clearly it's reconstructionist we don't know exactly how everything is pronounced or what everything meant like you know there are pieces that are missing but to the best of our ability you know trying to figure out what's taught what's for a priest what's for a scholar what's for a scribe what's for you know because every society has different jobs for different people every one person didn't know every single thing like that's there's no person like that nowadays even the smartest people can't do every single thing it's just we're human beings like point blank period we're human beings so uh let's let me move on uh if this fact be born in mind a great many difficulties in understanding religious texts disappear and many apparently childish facts are seen to have an important meaning oh that's loaded that is so loaded I feel like I let me I'm like let me read a little more before I say how loaded or not loaded that is if we look into the tombs of the early period we see painted on the walls numbers of scenes in which the deceased is represented making offerings to the Netaru and performing religious ceremonies as well as numbers of others in which uh he is directing the work of his estate and ruling his household because again we remember just historically rich people got tombs poor people sucks to be you hmm oh that's familiar sounds like twenty twenty-one you know um I mean I I suppose like yay we get pauper graves I guess that's a good thing but um 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 yeah no so it was not altogether the result of pride that such pictures were painted on the walls of tombs for at the bottom of his heart the I can't say Kometi you because that's plural so the comedic person how would you say male a male comedic person see look this is where my grammar this is this how you know I'm like I know it's a thing and I see the um the determinative in my mind of the man but I'm just like how would you pronounce that I don't know how to pronounce that so but if it was the glyph it it's the guy where he has one knee up one knee down and he's you know it's a man you know it's it's talking about a man so um well in the heart of the comedic man uh hoped and believed that they were in reality representations of what he would do in the next world and he trusted that the words of his prayers would turn pictures into realities and drawings into substances the wealthy um Komet Kometi you I still I'm I'm like the whole plural thing is throwing me the wealthy Kometi left behind him the means for making offerings which his ka or double needed and was able to provide for the maintenance of his tomb and of the Ka Chapel and of the priests or priestesses no I'm sorry priests or priests who ministered to it so he gives a visual example right there which makes sense to me you know okay modern application what could that look like and the first thing that comes to my mind is vision boards uh so even though yes it's not passed away but the whole function of vision board is you concentrate on what it is you want you find pictures freezes and things like that you paste them on a bunch of boards and a bunch of boards on a board I mean unless you have more than one just saying not like it's not possible uh you paste it up there and you could put it in your room you could put in your bathroom you could like wherever it is you're putting this thing and you feed it again intellectually spiritually mentally emotionally because you're looking at it you're it's like a constant reminder of what it is that you're trying to do so I could definitely see even though it doesn't have to do with death I can definitely see how vision boarding could mimic this kind of thi- this uh I don't wanna keep saying thing this kind of action you know again it's all about um we paint these walls and we try to do what we need to do in the everyday life to make what's in those pictures or what's on those walls come forth and manifest in our lives the only difference is the Kometi you or at least in this example we're thinking about you know what after life in the west versus right now the way we use it in twenty twenty-one where okay in the next year these are the things that I'm trying to accomplish so I gets it alright it was an article of faith among all classes that unless the Ka was properly fed it would be driven to wander about and pick up filth and anything else of that nature which it this is what happened when you drop stuff on your books and they get stuck and that it finds its path and as we may see it from the oh lord y'all know I love these Roman numerals so much just love them uh LII so I don't remember what L means but L second chapter of the Pur- in Peru in which the deceased says that which is an abomination unto me that which is an abomination unto me that which is an abomination unto me let me not eat that which is an abomination unto me that which is an abomination unto me is filth let me not eat of it instead of the cakes which are offered unto the um cow let it not light upon my body let me not be obliged to take it into my hands and let me not be obliged to walk there on there on sorry in my sandals that is interesting that is so interesting to me I'm sorry I'm like I had a moment thank you fifty so fifty second chapter of the Puritan Peru I don't know why I need you didn't need my musical stylings so the whole thing in there where I'm thinking is talking um you know about this abomination it's like you know they tell us and when they teachers uh priest you know whoever it is we're following um we talk about ancestor veneration and remembering our ancestors and so on and so forth so it's kind of like the way I see this is like in twenty twenty one planning or what do they call what is the word for it's a certain word where you're not it's not death planning but like you know like prepaying for your funeral talking to your family members like I there's a word for it but I can't remember off the top of my head right now um but that's kinda like how I see this where it's like you are planning for what's going to happen to you what's this what's that whatever and um it's so funny I'm like I I think I'm just a weirdo I am but you know I'm being modest but you know I've I remember having this conversation in my early twenties with my mom like if something happens to me you know this is what I want to happen uh she already has the phone numbers call this person and this person for um you know as far as religious ceremony and so on and so forth so it's like she knows so I suppose in a way it gives me peace of mind to know like if something happens to me this physical you know vessel will be taken care of enough and it's not just like you know no just throw it away like you know it's not like a dirty tissue or something because you know we we should respect the temples that we are given you know I don't wanna say all I don't wanna over generalize but many raw religions teach that you know as we do so we're supposed to respect this vessel we're supposed to treat it um with kindness like if we look at the forty two you're not supposed to pollute it you're not so you know you're supposed to watch your words you're supposed to watch your actions and all this other stuff um now granted it also underst- yes end of life planning thank you I see I knew I knew it I just couldn't remember the name of it I swear that's one thing like remembering certain words sometimes like so that's I appreciate y'all helping me out with them them things cuz oh lord sometimes I don't really remember but um yeah so end of life planning I could see like this um how this passage is saying or like how it's emphasizing uh the commit to you were very very concerned with being taken care of um you know to make sure that as they go into the duodas they traverse to the west and you know go through your forty days and then you know your your life and so on and so forth that you're still your spirit is still being fed that you're still being remembered and all that other stuff but if you don't make provisions for yourself um you know what I mean like what's gonna happen to you and that's that happens so much it happens so so much like um my cousin passed away golly I can't remember how long ago at this point but um oh gosh a lot of my cousins have passed away but one in particular that I am thinking of and um he passed away I wanna say at least maybe like seven eight years ago and um one of the things you know he was young he was in his forties um and what happened was that he had a fight with his girlfriend and his girlfriend was like get out you know how people be fighting with they with they significant others or whatever title you won't give him and she was like get out and she left him at the gas station took his you know his wallet his air his asthma pump everything was still in the car I hate you you know all you know how people do and she drove away and left him there and he died and like I swear if I have to identify one more body like it is not a fun thing if you've never done it like it's a picture that's burned in your mind forever so um anyways I wanna say two weeks after that like couldn't find they couldn't find the family cuz it was a John Doe he didn't have you know a wallet his he didn't have any identification on him they just found him you know they gotta process the body and do all these different things so and no lie it was literally my friends and I had gone out the night before for my birthday I had come home at like three four o'clock in the morning and I you know I think I might have been asleep for maybe two three hours hear a bang at the door I'm like what the crap is going on go downstairs and it's the police and I'm sitting there you know general you know your first reaction like what's going on so you know then they proceed and my mom always laughs at me when I or anybody usually laughs when I say this story cuz they're like hey we're we're from such and such town police and yada 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 um can we come in and I said no you can't come in they were like oh well you know we need we're we're here to you know talk about you know um and then they said my cousin's name and I was like he don't live here he you know because you know that him and the girlfriend had had issues back and forth and stuff like that so it was like I don't wanna be involved in they nonsense what you know what happened this time kind of a thing so they're like oh no we're here to talk to you about you know said his name and I was just like he don't live here yada yada like he lives over in this other town with his girlfriend you know I really don't know their address because they had moved a couple of times but you know go look for him over there they're like no 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 we're not here to look for him we need to talk to you about him and I was just like um okay but I kept the door you know lot like y'all ain't coming in here so they were like uh then they flashed their badge they were like oh no really we're like we're really police officers ah and I was just like you can buy that off the internet that don't mean nothing to me I gave them such a hard time but I was right though you can't tell me I was wrong but um so they proceeded to tell me that my cousin had passed away um uh like two weeks ago and they were essentially looking for a next of kin so that they could um you know identify release the body and have you know and stuff like that and I you know and then at that moment you know it hit you upside the head like oh my god so um I had to call my mom I had to call you know like all the rest of the family so long story long um because of that uh and he died suddenly and he didn't you know have arrangements and then you know we were supposed to try to do this and that and so but you know you think somebody's young oh you got time nothing's gonna happen blah 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 and something happened and he didn't get buried for like a month after he actually passed and then on top of that we had to take out a loan to bury him and then on top of that it took I wanna say another two or three years before we got a marker on the grave so um again if we're thinking like from the comedic perspective because he didn't make plans because plans were not made all this other stuff is happening but meanwhile you know you're supposed to be following certain steps to help you kinda shift and transition to that next stage of life but how can you do that if now you got it's kinda like you gotta play catch up in a way um even though you know spiritually we're not you know I mean you know physically he was gone so you know he was probably sitting in the house looking at us like actually no knowing my cousin he'd be like I'm so sorry I'm so sorry that that was more like he was he was like you know rough on the outside but like a teddy bear on the inside type so anyways that's how I'm seeing that so it's the idea when it's saying um that which is the abomination unto me that which is the abomination unto me let me not eat like he couldn't eat for that whole month nobody could give him flowers nobody could could lay a rose or or you know do any of that until a whole month later he couldn't be put to rest so that's an abomination um that which is an abomination unto me that which is an abomination uh to me is filth like it's despicable it's horrible that something like that has to happen now granted I do know in some cultures um you know life insurance and so on like end of life planning isn't a thing and um or if it's in another country they wait a whole month two months couple of months until um everybody comes home to bury the person and meanwhile in the meantime they're collecting money from all different family members so that they can pay for you know whatever it is needs to be paid for so um again it's that same thing like well what is what's going on for that spirit for you know the vessel yes we're trying to put to rest the vessel but again when it comes to death it's that yes the spirit is gone but you still need to take care of the vessel in some way shape or form um let me not eat of it instead of the cakes which are offered to me so AKA you can't give no offerings you can't like if you're burning ancestor money if you're doing any of those things you can't even do that because you're still trying to play catch up and get it together um let me uh let it not light upon my body let me not be obliged to take it into my hands and let me not so basically hopefully this bad luck or you know what's going on you know will kinda go past me I don't you know hopefully this doesn't happen to me cuz I wanna be prepared so that's how I'm reading that and then it has like a visual right there so it says uh the scribe Ani and his wife standing in a stream drinking water from the papers of Ani plate sixteen which if you decide you're going to read the papers of Ani um please read the gardener version um I personally like um what is it called the budge version just because it has the glyphs and everything like that but I feel like especially as a newbie you know think like little kids when they're learning you like pictures you know so it just kinda set your mind and get your mind primed uh for you know the whole thing and then you can go into the words and and then the glyphs and then what do they mean and you know all that other good stuff learning how to pronounce the different um glyphs and and all of that so you're good so in the we're back to Roman numerals uh gosh so C if I'm not mistaken feel free to correct me C would be a hundred so fifty ten twenty thirty oh my god I literally need to walk myself through this like that's how bad Roman numerals are to me like it's like um you know how they say when you when you're bilingual how your brain has to like kinda translate back and forth like that's how I feel about Roman numerals I'm sorry I'm like I really am just like laughing at myself way too much so eighty ninth chapter so a hundred and eighty ninth chapter that took a lot uh he prays that he may not be obliged to drink filthy water or be defiled in any way by it I feel like that is something we would all say like you know after you pass away and I and again it's like you know if you think metaphorically not literally physically cuz the physical body's not drinking and the spiritual body can't pick up water but if we're thinking about it to not be obliged like no you know um how can I say it's not like you're having an adverse reaction to like drinking filthy water but it's just like it's not even on your table setting like you no thank you and it doesn't even come kinda like when you go out to eat and you know for a while there they were like oh would you like some water versus when you go some places they literally just give you a cup of water yeah no it's it's like um they always tell us was like the X the I the V but like C L M I think uh yeah see look yeah that now I'm looking at it again and thinking about it again I'm like I know I don't know it because I've never truly studied it I only know a couple of numbers so it's like I'm not illiterate but I'm functionally illiterate when it comes to Roman numerals ah okay you always got you gotta laugh at yourself the rich man even was not certain that the appointed offerings of meat and drink could or would be made in his tomb in perpetuity what then was the poor man to do to save his car from the oh he just hitting me left and right with these words okay ignomity ig no 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 that's not the right word ignominy yes check ignominy of eating filth and drinking dirty water that's interesting but I I mean I think that's just the reality like at the end of the day we have an idea we have a hope we have a whole cosmology and everything that's gonna tell us this is what happens when you pass away but you know they tell you oh you know I came back and I had a near death experience and it looked like this but nobody really knows nobody truly truly knows what happens so when it's saying like the rich man and the poor man nobody really knows what's gonna happen like you try to make this tomb you don't you wanna make sure you're doing the right things but you can't be a thousand hundred but you can't be that sure you just hope pray have faith all that other good stuff so um it was something else I was about to say with that but now I don't remember keep it pushing so to get out of this difficulty the model of an altar uh in stone was made and models of cakes cases of water fruit meat etc were placed upon it in cases where this was not possible figures of the offerings were sculpted upon the stone itself in others where even the expense of an altar could not be borne by the relatives of the dead an altar with offerings painted upon it was placed in the tomb and as long as it existed through the prayers recited the car did not lack food so you're still taking care of the relative the person made you know yes we're gonna have a paint we can't afford to have that stone one over there like that would be dope but the money's a little tight so just paint that picture and feed my car like that that is was happening here like that's what they wanted so that makes sense sometimes neither altar nor model nor picture of an altar was placed in the tomb and the prayer that oh he really going in on me right now I wouldn't how do I say this suplurical I've never even heard of that word this is what you get for reading stuff from nineteen hundred suplurical who S E P U L C H R A L no so it would be suplural gosh that's a tongue twister oh lord alright I feel one years old reading that word right now um oh context clues though hello don't you love context clues the prayer that these meals might be given to the deceased by the netaru so pretty mu- it it looks like supplement it's like uh and feel free to you know Google dictionary let me know if if I'm on point or if I'm totally wrong um but the way I read that would be like between that and the metaphysical meals given to um the person who passed away would be like I wanna like the netaru would come in and just kinda be like yeah this is this is a good one this is how y'all are doing what you're supposed to do you was prepared we bless all of this this happening right now that's the way I'm interpreting that but again if I don't have the right definition feel free to correct me so where where's that funky word here I am so where where's that funky word here I am alright maybe you see the which was inscribed upon some article of funeral furniture was the was the only provision made for the wants of the car but every time anyone who passed by the tomb recited that prayer and coupled it with the name of the person who is buried in it his car was provided with a fresh supply of meat and drink offerings for um models or pictures of them in the inscription straight away became um veritable substances that totally sounds and again I'm just like on a comparison wagon today but that sounds like that concept that Christians have of have of transubstantiation where and it's so funny cuz I was having this conversation with my mom and um transubstantiation is primarily a Catholic thing where they literally believe that the like whether it's a wafer or a piece of bread and the wine or if it's grape juice that it literally turns into flesh and blood like you cannot like it's not you know other other um other I gosh what is the name of it not delineations denominations other denominations just say oh no it's infused with the spirit it's a reminder for the practitioner but no Catholics straight up believe if you eat this piece of bread you are literally eating part of flesh off of this person so uh and it's like that magical or spiritual process transubstantiation of taking this bread and turning it into that flesh so it's the same type of concept where they're saying like every time you pass by and say this prayer you it's kinda like you're refilling what's in there for the person who's passed away so your prayer literally transforms into food for them to eat like that like I don't know if that helps or makes more sense but anyway that's my interpretation uh or explanation of um you know that whole process on the insides of the wooden coffins of the ten eleven twelve dynasty about twenty five hundred BCE are painted whole series of objects which in still earlier times were actually placed in the tombs uh with the deceased but little by little people ceased to provide the numerous articles connected with the sepulcher of the um person who passed away excuse me which the old ritual prescribed and they trusted to the text and formula which they painted on the coffin to turn pictures into substances and beside the pillow they place they place little else in the tomb so that's interesting that even you know when we think about ancient Kemet it's thousands of years old so it's not oh they did one thing and they did that the whole time that's why you know there are still so many arguments and or non arguments or misunderstandings because you could see one thing here for this time period one thing there for that time period you you know it it might be a little or seem to be disjointed and it really is just human um you know evolution um so just like we used to barter then instead of bartering we held gold coins but gold coins were heavy as hell so now we have paper money now we don't even necessarily have paper money we have cash app it's all the same idea but you know we make it to fit the time we live in so instead of carving all of these things out of stone they're like I could just paint it let me make it eat keep it simple kind of a thing so that makes sense uh about a thousand years later when the religious texts were I'm sorry which formed the perdom haru were written upon papri instead of coffins a large number of illustrations or vignettes were added to them too many of these special importance was attached and the following are of worthy note it will be remembered that the ten twenty fifth so the seventy fifth chapter of the perdom haru contains the so-called negative confessions ooh I'm like depending on what time I'm like how much time do we have oh we almost out of time so that means instead of raw next week we got raw over here and raw over here that means since we talking about Maat you know who bout to be up there next week that's right my ox my sis I love her so much anyway so I'm gonna finish with this specific part and then we'll we'll uh pick up with that oh yeah I don't know why I'm so happy I really am souped right now oh my gosh I'm I'm having such a nerdy moment don't judge judge me but don't judge me no judge me but don't judge me hastily as the forty two says alright so about a thousand years later when the religious texts blah 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 they painted it um and the worthy of note it will be remembered that in this chapter um which is recited in the hall of Maati and a number of names of nature and beings the knowledge of which is most important for the welfare of the deceased at the end of the chapter we find the following statement this chapter se- uh shall be said by the deceased after he hath been cleansed and purified and when he is arrayed in in apparel and is shrouded with white leather sandals and his eyes have been painted with uh antimony sorry and his body hath been anointed with anti unguent which if you've ever seen like uh Nivia how how they have that like little um what do you call it it's like a little metal container but there's lotion in it it that's what unguent is it's kinda like of some type of bomb if you will um and when he hath made offerings of oxen and birds and incense and cakes and ales and garden herbs and behold thou shalt paint a picture of which shall happen in the hall of Maati upon the new tile molded from earth upon which neither a pig nor any other animal hath trodden and if thou writest upon it this chapter the deceased shall flourish and his children shall flourish and his name shall fra- shall never fall into oblivion and bread and cakes and sweet meats and wine and meat shall all be given unto him at the altar of the great nature and he shall not be turned back at any door in the hmm how do I put in the duod yeah that makes sense that makes most that's the best word uh and he shall be brought in along with the nasut of the north and the south and he shall be in the following of a sar always and forever here then we have an excellent example of the far oh okay I thought he was gonna say a different word of the far reaching effects of a picture accompanied by the proper words of power and every picture of in the perdom haru was equally uh effect uh I'm about to say that wrong efficacious in producing a certain result uh and that result always been connected to the welfare of the person so that kinda goes back to what I was saying earlier about like the power of imagery the power of like why why a lot of commit you might use vision boards and things like that why me personally why I have tattoos and things like that because to me I know the way I learned the the best thing for me is visuals I'm a visual person um so having all of these visuals having these things helps us bring it to life helps us manifest helps remind us like this is who we say we are this is what we're about this is what we're doing this is where we're going this is why we're going and all of that other stuff because again even now twenty um twenty twenty um you know the use of emojis uh like or even like TikTok even Instagram how much pictures and visuals can communicate without having to speak so um you know again all of that makes so much sense to me so we are leaving off on oh I already turned the page see look I'm bugging alright so we are leaving off on page one hundred and nine that's where we're gonna pick off uh pick up not pick off pick up next week um I also started uploading previous study sessions onto my YouTube channel and um golly it's it's just so many it's like not enough hours in the day but there are just so many things that I uh have been working on to really 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 try to grow and just expand um people's everyday understanding of um being a comedic person in the twenty first century so if you are interested in that if you would like to join us learn with us uh as I've said before I am no priest I'm just a regular degular person trying to figure it out um so I invite you all to join me in conversation um and pretty much learn along with me help help me figure out help us figure out um the comedic le- legacy in the twenty first century what it looks like how do we practice it how do we learn it how do we pass it on to our kids how do we use it when we have crappy moments in life how that's what that's what this platform is all about so if you are also interested in that please join us over at comedic living in the twenty first century over on Facebook it is a private group um feel free to apply join us and join the conversation so until then please stay safe uh I will see you all same time next week six PM Eastern Standard Time uh on Thursday so give yourself to nature daily keep yourself to nature daily and may tomorrow be as today I will see y'all next week